Welcome this evening to the June 10th Board of Education Regular Meeting, which will now be called to order. And we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Who would all like to follow along with me? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Our which stands one nation.
Under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice in mind.
All for being here. The first order of business is to approve the consent agenda, which includes the agenda. And just to remind everyone, the consent agenda includes items of routine and non-controversial nature, and they are placed on the consent agenda to allow us to have more time to focus on other items in the lengthy agenda. We do not have necessarily lengthy agenda this evening, but there is a bunch of monitoring reports at the end that are on consent. And any additional documentation you might want to find will be available in Board Docs. And hopefully you'll find that satisfactory. Is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Stecker. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Kelly, Ms. Alter. Any further comments or questions this evening on this? No, perfect. Missy?
Thank you. Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varakounas?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Now we may proceed. And the first item is public participation. Due because of the COVID, as we've heard this evening, there's been some changes. And public participation is we request that they submit it in writing between four and five PM on the night of the meeting, and then it will be read by the Secretary of the Board. We do have the option for people who do not have access to Internet or computer services, that they can show up in person, but there is nobody in the meeting room today. I think all the public participation we've been looking for this evening has come in through the email, and we do appreciate that. So I'm going to turn it over now to Ms. Stecker.
Thank you. So our first letter for public participation comes from Amy Van Gooey, and it reads, "To the Board, I would like to submit my opinion on the upcoming 2020-21 school year. I believe it is more important than ever that we get our students back into a brick and mortar school. While I appreciate the district quickly following the recommendations from the county, I think we can all agree that this changed us all for any future COVID concerns. I believe that our students and educators will be cognizant of their surroundings, their hygiene, and attention to one's health. I have great faith that this community will come together to outline and then follow proper procedures to allow our students a true education, one that is back inside their schools and not on a computer. It's time to provide some type of normalcy for our kids back in school and back in extracurricular activities. We can do it. Thank you." And just as a reminder, we have a time limit of three minutes for each of these, so we've got timers going. And when we hit the three-minute mark, just to be fair and have time for everybody, I'll finish that sentence and stop where I am, but know that the Board has the full letters here forward. So the next letter comes to us from Robin Olson. Dear Eagle Valley Board of Education, my name is Robin Olson, and I have lived in Eagle Ranch since 2017 with my husband Tyne, five-year-old Vivian, who will start kindergarten, and seven-year-old Declan, who will begin second grade at Brush Creek Elementary this fall. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to participate and share my thoughts. Working together to figure out how to safely get all of our children safely back to full-time school in the fall is a top priority for so many in our valley. It really resonated with this quote from North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper. "We are working together to balance the needs of all of our children to get back to school, especially children who rely on public schools for their education, health, safety, and nutrition, while at the same time proceeding cautiously and deliberately to protect their health and safety." And then she outlines a number of points. I'll start with number one, look at the science and data. We must ask ourselves, does the science and data for Eagle County, as of today, eight deaths from COVID in Eagle County since the start of the pandemic, support keeping healthy kids out of school, but the remainder of society back to normal and getting the economy going? If 85% of people who die are over 65, none so far have been children, does that support keeping kids home from school? Or does it support keeping the vulnerable, those over 65 and with pre-existing conditions, safe and protected instead? With the lowest fatality rate in the nation, perhaps we can really explore the need and desire for full-time school for the social and emotional and academic needs of our children. Second point, in the U.S., less than 2% of cases involve children with less than 5% of those, 2% of cases severe and less than 1% critical. These stats are very encouraging to me as a parent. What is not encouraging is the effectiveness of virtual learning, especially for younger children under 12. The Wall Street Journal reported on May 20th, "Parents and public health officials are understandably worried, but some perspective is in order given the virus is apparent overall low risk to children." The Centers for Disease Controls and Prevention reported last week that 15 children under age 15 in the U.S. have died of COVID-19 since February, compared to about 200 who died of the flu and pneumonia. Children represent 0.2%, of virus fatalities in the U.S., and very few have been hospitalized. Point three, the mental and psychological toll being out of school and isolated is taking on our children. The LA Times noted, "Four-year-olds have playdates through closed windows, sliding their toy cars in unison on either side of the glass." A high school student worries about his mother going to work in a foodpacking warehouse at risk for contracting COVID-19. Another teen says, "There is nothing to look forward to," as he tries to avoid sliding into depression. Worried parents are... That's the timer here. I'll just finish that sentence. Worried parents are calling school district hotlines seeking help for their troubled children. Thank you so much for your letter, Robin, and again, know that we have the rest of the letter that we can read, and we'll be sure to take note of. The next letter comes to us from Beth Riley. Hi, my name is Beth Riley. I'm an employee of Eagle County Schools in the Early Childhood Department. I am also a member of the Everett's Metro District and represent the Metro District on the Climate Action Collaborative. It has come to my attention that Eagle County Schools will serve lunches with single-use utensils and single-use Styrofoam plates. This is bad for many reasons, and if the Board needs more information on why this is bad, I encourage dialogue with the Climate Action Collaborative. It boggles the mind when thinking of how much waste this will generate daily. What would Greta say? I am extremely disappointed in this decision. This is counterproductive to the Board's broad community efforts to address climate and environmental stewardship in our community. This action does not reflect the values many of our teachers are teaching our students about environmental stewardship. We should walk our talk and live our values. I ask that ECS and the Board articulate to the community why they have made this decision and put the future of the planet we will leave to our children as a low priority. Please reconsider this decision. There are plenty of better options. Eagle County Schools can be a positive force to address climate change. Instead, this proposal puts ECS as a large negative outlier among the many local organizations, governments, businesses, and individuals committed to and attempting to make a positive difference. No one would say that addressing climate change is easy, but at least, please don't set us back. Most sincerely, Beth Riley, MPH Citizen. And the next letter comes to us from Joe Drew. Dear Eagle County School Board Members, the following statistics are from the CDC.gov website regarding school-aged children in the U.S. 2019: Deaths from influenza, 477; deaths from accidents, 4,120; deaths from homicides, 652, ages 14 and younger; deaths from suicide, 569, ages 14 and younger; deaths from COVID-19 to date for ages 14 and younger, 20. The fear of losing a child is real, and if it happens to you or your loved ones, it is devastating. However, if you examine the probability of COVID-19 resulting in your child's death versus the risk of them dying from preventable causes listed above, the actual risk to our children from COVID-19 is significantly low. When deciding how to move forward, next year's school schedule, please do not allow fear to guide your decisions. We have a society built around a five-day-a-week school calendar. We have families who can't teach at home, who do not have computers or Internet access. Anything less than a return to normal school schedule is unacceptable, in my opinion. Sincerely, Joe Drew." And our final letter that was submitted within the window is from Brittany Bradshaw. Sorry, Whitney. She writes, "I want to email to voice my desire for the Eagle County Public Schools to reopen as normal this upcoming school year. Beyond the financial implications of not being able to work full-time because of remote learning, I am most concerned with the social-emotional implications this has already had and will continue to have as long as we keep our kids separate. In the last few months, I have consoled my usually easygoing seven-year-old several times after emotional breakdowns. Him telling me that he is sad and he doesn't know why, all the while knowing it's the break-in routine, not being able to go to school, interact with his peers, and the confusion of seeing his teachers on a screen. I worry the long-reaching social implications, not just on my child, but all children. Also, I want to be very clear that I will not send my children to our public school if they are required to wear face masks, can't socially interact with their peers, whether that be in the classroom, lunchroom, or at recess. I understand you all have a tough job ahead of you. I appreciate your hard work. Thank you so much for your time. Sincerely, Whitney Bradshaw."
All right. Thank you very much, Michelle. Appreciate that. And thanks to everyone who submitted their letters. And Ms. Olson, we just be reassured that the letters that were submitted within the window have been received by email, and all the Board members will read them and can read them over multiple times. And then there were some other letters that were submitted outside of the window, and we also received them by email, and will be able to read them. No decisions will be made this evening regarding next fall. We're waiting for more data and more planning, and that's hard for us all, the waiting game. But we appreciate everyone's patience, and we will add the environmental conversation to the agenda in the near future. I found as I've been able to leave my house again and indulge in a little bit of takeout food, that it does sadden me as well, the strides we've made in towards bringing our own cups and our own into coffee shops and not having so much disposable. It's completely gone a huge backslide everywhere from the grocery store to restaurants, and that'll be an environmental question for us to tackle. But this evening, we are moving on to our reports and then a short agenda of action items. So Superintendent Qualman, you are up.
I am here. Can I get?
I guess I need to finish just again with thanking everyone for the understanding and compassion during this revised public participation process. It's not ideal, but hopefully the public feels like they're getting their message out, and we definitely are able to read what they have to say to us, if nothing else. And we appreciate them following these COVID procedures. All right. You got your report up? There you go.
All right. I'm online here. President Caccarella, can you hear me and see the presentation? Give a thumbs up? Yep. All right. Then let's go ahead and get into it. All right, Joanne, can you skip to the next? That's perfect, right there. So I'd like to begin by talking about a survey that we initiated this week. It started actually on Friday. Thus far, we've had over 3,000 results. That's very impressive. This survey went directly to staff and to parents via email. And if you haven't received one, please email the District Office at our info email, and we can get a link to you. But with 3,000 respondents, that's certainly an adequate sample size. So I'd like to, without getting into the weeds on the survey, I think people are anxious to hear some results from that. And with Board members present, I'd like to do a top-10-style takeaway, so we don't get too into the weeds. So in terms of scheduling and formatting for next school year, we just heard some feedback from community members advocating for the back-to-school-five-days-a-week plan. That was the model that we showed the most interest in, or at least the greatest comfort in. But there were also quite a few, many respondents, who were comfortable in going with the hybrid model, just two or three days a week, if that can better facilitate the distancing requirements. The 100% online was by far the least desirable from many respondents. So I think the survey tells us that no matter which model we choose, we will make some people very happy and a few people unhappy. But that feedback is really important. It helps us figure out what the community values are as we move forward. From both the parent group and the personnel group, safety is everyone's number-one priority. So we'll continue to keep that at the forefront as we do our planning. In the hybrid model, we asked a question about whether using a schedule where we had students attending on Monday, Thursday, and then a second group attend on Tuesday, Friday, was preferable over students attending Monday, Tuesday, and then the second group attending Thursday, Friday. It was pretty even on that. There wasn't, I would say, a nominal desire for one over the other. But there was, I think, consistent opposition to splitting the day half and half. So some students going in the morning, some students going in the afternoon. We did see a lot of support from all groups, all demographics, to support formal protocols around things like masks by staff or students. How do we define an outbreak in a school? And when does that outbreak result in a school closure? And then for how long would we close? And I can tell you that I have been working with Public Health Department here in Eagle County, and as well as school leaders from the private parochial schools, and we're working on some consistent definitions for those elements. Of those who responded as parents, that they helped their students with remote learning in the fourth quarter, it was slightly more than not that said they had a positive experience there, either very comfortable or somewhat comfortable with or positive with how that experience turned out. And I was really impressed to see that 2/3 of respondents said they actively participated with their students in that process. The two elements of remote learning that people appreciated the most were flexibility and independence in learning. So students taking more accountability for their own classwork. The concerns about remote learning, and we have mentioned these before, and we're definitely working around these, working to improve these as we come back in the fall, were the need for more consistency, and that really, I think, is speaking to synchronous instruction. Can we still have a schedule? Can we still have set time when kids are expected to be engaged in the learning? And that could increase engagement and accountability. And the number 10 item, last one, would be what professional development or training is needed in the event that we end up in a hybrid model or have to go back to fully remote. And from the teachers who took the survey, coming out loud and clear, "Our culturally responsive strategies and how to build relationships in an online model." I think both of those link very closely to the Equity work that we started this past school year, and is a great extension of those concepts. On the technical side, the teachers have asked for additional training in using the Schoology format, which we are considering as our uniform platform of delivery, so we don't have quite so many different modules or logins or platforms that parents and students have to manage, as well as learning how to teach in a flipped classroom model. So those are the PD elements that we're working on. So again, this survey closes on Friday. We will be able to disaggregate data, both by grade level, by elementary, middle, high school level. We can do it by east-west, by municipality. We can do it by employees, non-employees. So we'll be able to disaggregate that significantly over the following week after it closes, and come back to you with even more specific data. So back to the report, we have Governor Polis and Commissioner Anthes listed. I did participate last Friday in a conference call that included Governor Polis and CDE Commissioner Dr. Anthes. That meeting was very informative. The governor had made some comments in some smaller settings in the previous week about what he expected schools to look like in fall, and he confirmed those comments on Friday. He said that he expects schools to be open five days a week. I thought that was interesting, considering 100 of the 178 school districts in Colorado are actually on a four-day school week, pre-COVID. So to expect a five-day week when the majority of the districts never did that is an interesting comment. One of the elements that the governor did reference is learning cohorts. He mentioned this several times. He believes that cohorts can contain up to 25 students, and that those students need to stay put in their classrooms throughout the day, and that teachers would move between classrooms as the instructional content changed. The purpose for this is to limit their interaction around the school and to try to make it easier in the event that there is an outbreak, to determine the smallest group possible for whom you would cancel school. So instead of a whole district, you'd consider a school, or maybe even a grade level, or even a classroom. He did believe that the social distancing would be nice, but may not be realistic in a school setting, especially for younger kids. We would still follow some of the recommended practices from CDE, like serving lunches in classrooms, staggering recesses, staggering passing periods in the hall. So those are concepts that we are working with. So those comments from the governor definitely impacted our planning. So we'll stick on the same slide here. So planning for school year 20 and 21. We have been continuing to meet an ad team with other principals and directors, as well as in levels, so elementary principals together, middle school, high school. I can tell you that the comments that we heard from those who sent messages in to the Board, we appreciate that feedback, as well as the survey results. So all of those things will help us understand what the values are of the community. And I really appreciate the comment that Shelley Jarno made at the beginning, that it's in the work session that this is less an opinion thing from the superintendent or from the Board, and that it is a science thing or a collaborative decision model between district leadership, parents, and the input that we give back from them, Board members, and public health. So we all will be making the decision that's best for Eagle County and what the values are of Eagle County. Those decisions could be trumped by the governor or the Department of Education, but what we have seen thus far is they've given us a lot of latitude to plan locally, and we appreciate that. So how do those comments from the governor impact our planning moving forward? Well, we think that the 25-student cohort model is feasible in elementary schools. So our elementary principals are trying to figure out how to make that work, how would teachers rotate? I'm at a point here where my desk is about to get hammered by the sun. Might have to switch locations. The 25-student cohort model, we do think is feasible for elementary, and the principals are working through those details right now. Again, staggered recesses, lunches in classrooms, trying to limit the time that you get all the kids together in a big group. We're also still recognizing that we need to have a Plan B, and the backup plan is in the event that there are multiple positive cases in a school or staff members who are susceptible, and too many are out to function in the school day, what's our backup plan? And the backup plan would be rolling into a hybrid model. So we would have a couple of days of direct instruction, and then a couple of days of students doing remote learning. So that's the elementary school model. Now, let's jump all the way up to high school. With 1,000 people in a school at Eagle Valley and Battle Mountain, the 25-student cohort model doesn't work. We can never limit the passing periods. We can never limit the directional flow of traffic in the hallways. So high schools are, especially our biggest high schools, are still trying to figure out how to make the hybrid model work for them, and we're working on those details right now. Middle school is somewhere in between. Some of them are thinking that the 25-student cohort model might work. They tend to have class sizes that are a little bit above 25, and they don't have the staffing or the teacher ratio to get those down below 25. But they're working on some creative solutions to that. So again, we're working with public health, and I think in the last meeting I had with them on Tuesday afternoon just yesterday, that they left with a lot of questions from school leaders from around the county, and that they're going to come back with some more precise definitions. All right. We can skip to the next slide. All right. Recent activities. So we have been continuing to engage with the Teachers Association, Eagle County Education Association, in the negotiations process as per the collaborative bargaining agreement. We talked a little bit about working conditions in our meeting on Monday, but we still don't have a finalized budget from the state. We lack a finalized long bill and a finalized School Finance Act. They have been introduced, but they're subject to change. So really, there's no reason for us to talk about things that have financial impact until those are finalized. We scheduled our next meeting for June 22nd. Originally, the legislature was going to end their session this Friday, but I think they've recognized that there's too much work to do, and they're not going to end it this Friday. They're going to continue through next week. So we'll see more about negotiations after that concludes. So on our list here, also, I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Eagle County School District and send our thoughts and prayers out to the family of the missing young boy in Eagle. He went missing on Friday evening, and he's one of our students at one of our preschools. There was incredible support from the community over the weekend. I sent you detailed notes about that, but I did want to acknowledge publicly, there were over 500 volunteers who showed up to help look for the young boy. They were all colors, all ages, all demographics. It was very heartening to see our community come together in this crisis and spend their entire weekend outside looking for him. As you are aware, we opened Eagle Valley Middle School to serve as a volunteer hub with law enforcement, and we also scheduled counselors to provide support from Saturday through this Thursday at Eagle Valley Middle School and even remotely via phone calls. And we have been able to provide some support, especially for those of our staff who are teachers and knew him well and his family well. So those counseling efforts are a combined effort with Eagle County School District and the Hope Center. And we do hold out hope that he can be found soon, and again, send our thoughts and prayers out to the young boy's family. The last item I'd like to address was not listed on there, but I did want to point out to the Board that at our ad team meeting yesterday, I wanted to get input from principals regarding their thoughts on school resource officers in Eagle County. I'm sure in the last few weeks, many of you have followed the news, and the murder of George Floyd has prompted many school districts around the nation to evaluate their relationship with law enforcement, specifically the concept of school resource officers, or what we typically call SROs. And SROs are trained police officers with supplemental training to understand how to work with young people. So I brought this up yesterday with principals to get their opinion. I didn't show my cards at the time, because I really wanted to understand how they felt about it. And I just want to share with you some of their key findings. Most believe that the SROs are valuable assets in our schools, that they serve as a symbol of security and order. They help with prevention of bad decisions, and that they're most effective when they are housed in a single school, and they are present and engaged with students and staff every day. So they're in the cafeterias, talking to kids at lunch, they're in the hallways, they're in front of school before and after. So the more they get to know kids, the more effective that they are. We did have a couple of differing opinions who thought that the money that we spend on SROs could be used better for different things. And to be clear, we have three assigned school resource officers that we partner with Eagle County to provide. We pay half of the cost, and Eagle County governments pays the other half. So it's a partnership. We also get SRO support from municipalities, municipal police departments like Vail, Avon, and Eagle. However, their SROs are actually their patrol officers, and they do receive some supplemental SRO training, but we're not supplementing their income in any way, and they spend the majority of their time as patrol officers and just help the schools in those municipalities. So we left that meeting feeling like we believe it's time to meet with the sheriff and to review the SRO program and align our visions of the school district and the county for what SROs, what the purpose is in our schools. So we still believe, I think the consensus of the group was strong, that we still believe that they can be effective, but it's a good reminder for us to sit down and to revisit those partnerships. So I've got a couple of school leaders that are going to help me in that process. I'm going to reach out to the sheriff soon and see if we can schedule a time to revisit the mission. And that was my lengthy report today. President, I appreciate your patience.
We appreciate the work and effort you're putting in. I say, it's either people are either out of work or they're working triple. That's what I found, and I know our team at Eagle County Schools is working triple. This brings us to board reports, and we're just running through alphabetic. This brings us to board reports and we're just running through alphabetically. Ms. Alter?
Okay, I guess I would want to start by saying um that I appreciate all the efforts in the community and my heart goes out to the family of the missing student. It's just heartbreaking and I hope that there is some resolution sometime soon. So anyway, that's been on the mind. In terms of school stuff, I uh did attend a land resource committee meeting. I think we skipped the meeting in maybe May, so we had a meeting in June. But essentially, we completed the master plan, I think back in March or so, and we are sort of continuing um with that plan. Starting to hopefully implement phase one of the plan. So I think the pieces of that are sort of now trying to secure some leases for teachers um to get some housing, you know, almost immediately. And then looking at developing um a parcel on the east side of Battle Mountain as well as on Third Street in Eagle. And I think we're sort of at a point now where we're just trying to sort of figure out pricing and if we can actually build affordable housing for the teachers. Because uh it makes no sense to build those houses if the teachers can't afford them. So we're continuing on the path and it's a lot of exciting stuff. And the school district has um you know, lots of good parcels of land, which is always great in this community. So hopefully, uh you know, we'll be able to accomplish some great things there. What else do I have? I actually did participate in the uh Vale Valley Peace Rally, which took place, I think maybe last Wednesday in Vale. Oh, sorry, muted myself. That was actually incredibly well attended. I don't think I've ever actually been to uh, you know, I've been to some women's marches and some other events in Vale. And this was, I the numbers were staggering. It felt a little awkward because I've been socially distancing for so long that to be in that kind of crowd was actually inspiring, but also a little overwhelming and interesting. But we all did have our masks on. I can't claim that we were socially distanced per se, but it was just a really overwhelming turnout. In support of a very important cause and issue surrounding our school. Or surrounding our community and our world, our country. It's crazy, it's not our world, our country. And finally, uh my son graduated. He's my oldest, so he was the first to graduate and it wasn't quite what I anticipated. But he has graduated from high school now. And I think that, you know, all the schools are doing the best that they can during the circumstances, trying to give these seniors the best send off that they can. Definitely a little awkward. But uh but yeah, so he graduated and that's about all I have to report on my end.
All right, great, thank you very much. As far as myself, I've been uh really super busy with a lot of uh personal stuff, getting taking care of my daughter and some health issues. But uh I also get to uh work on emails from constituents and from the facility committee. And uh some agenda planning over the past two weeks. Just a few comments. Oh, there is a chat on this, but it is not part of the meeting and will not be recorded. So it's just, we recommend that nobody use it, but um. But the survey is still open until Friday and so the uh disaggregated results will not be available till next next week afterwards. And if I got it correctly from Superintendent Qualman, if you don't have the link and you wish you did, you can't find that email that was sent out. You email info at eagleschools.net and we'll send you a new link. Regarding the budget work, it's always adjusted in January and uh we're going to do our best next meeting on the twenty fourth to approve the closest thing to a. Accurate budget as we can, but since we're waiting for the state, that's always a little tricky. But we do have that January timeframe to make any adjustments to it. And uh as everybody will want to say, tonight, a heart just goes out to the family every time a small child is missing. It's it's just heartbreaking, we really are all feeling that pain. And I I am impressed with the response from our company, our our community and the across the nation, across the world. To uh any uh police brutality, which is not an issue to be taken lightly at all, but I. At the risk of saying the completely wrong thing here, I would like to also take a minute to to recognize all of the upstanding. Police officers that are out there that are good and true and honest and and their duty is and their hearts are to serve and protect. So we know that it's not a completely corrupt system and there are there are people out there trying to do the right thing. Very, very challenging and uh uh to work with, especially here in the rural area. The problems in the that are rampant in the cities are maybe a little bit more difficult for us to understand and relate to. And I know that uh but I am personally trying to work on understanding and and opening my heart. To really get a feeling for the big picture and appreciate everyone else's efforts to do that that same thing. And if I forgot anything, I'll hit it in old and new business, but uh I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jarno now for her report.
Thanks. Likewise, I uh my heart goes out to the family of a missing child. I'm also incredibly um impressed and just once again in awe of the community and how many people. Showed up to help and just uh the outpouring of support. So um thanks to everyone who was involved. I attended the Land Resource Committee. Kelly gave a pretty good update of that. I mean, I guess the one thing that I would add is that it's just um should be known that we are continuing. I mean, even given the circumstances and sort of the changes in the economic landscape. I think we're pretty committed to continuing to move down that path and hopefully um get some more information. We actually um have uh hired a person to sort of look at the feasibility of both the Third Street site in Eagle and the um. Next to Battle Mountain, the the piece there. Also, I just wanted to give a shout out to the group that helped create the graduation videos. I don't think we've met since I um saw my saw those. And I just was incredibly impressed. I was actually with a group of people, we were outside. But um I know that everyone that was there really found it meaningful and felt like it was really professionally done. And I just want to thank those that put their time and effort into doing that. It wasn't an ideal situation, but I feel like um given the circumstances, they did a great job. And I attended a Casby Board Meeting. It's pretty interesting. I think obviously, like our districts, they are also very concerned about their finances. As districts are sort of looking where to cut things, I think Casby gets worried that people will drop memberships or. Just that the support won't be there. There was some discussion about whether or not to hold the December Conference. Unfortunately, there is a commitment already, a significant commitment. That Casby would not be able to get out of. But there is also concern on the part of districts as to whether or not the perception of. Going to the Broadmoor at a time when we're making cuts in lots of other places um seems appropriate. So um more news on that as we move forward. But um there's definitely a lot of concern there that they uh will not have the same resources. There there was a pretty.
Well, hopefully she'll come right back in here. Sometimes have a little glitching. Give it a minute to cycle back in.
Lunch distribution and I just I've helped with the lunch distribution at the. I also was at the Vale Peace Rally. And I have to say that I was impressed with how young the crowd was. I felt like an old lady. And um there are lots and lots of kids and I think it speaks well or bodes well for our future. So that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Dr. Long?
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we went to uh my wife was taking her real estate exam and uh the only time she could get it was on uh the first of June. So we had to go to, I decided to get the family out and we just decided to go to to Denver and stay the weekend and she had to go early Monday morning. And we didn't know until Thursday that there were riots and things. So it was uh it was an eye opener for me, but every night seeing the, you know, the riots in Denver and uh the curfew at eight. And how many, many people were following the curfew, but there just seemed to be a. It seemed to be a a dedicated group of people who were interested in looting and setting things on fire. And uh it's a shocking thing to sit there with your children in a hotel room and seeing the, you know, the downtown Denver area just kind of going up in flames in some points. And uh um you know, the peaceful protesters, you know, uh hats off to them, they did a great job and they got their message across. But I get a strong feeling there were a group of people that they weren't there so much for the protest as maybe an opportunity to. To cause some chaos and loot some stores. So you know, I'm I'm for the peaceful protest, I think that's great and it's certainly a worthy cause. But I'm with Kate as well. I had uh the best man at my wedding was a Chicago policeman for seven years. And uh there are many, many, many people, most people in my opinion, in law enforcement, put their lives on the line every day. And uh you know, certainly prosecute someone who is breaking the law in this case, even if it is a police officer. But uh let's not forget that it's not, not every police officer is doing that, you know, and and doing that in the course of duty. So it's a it's a conflicting time, but I think um you know, time will tell. Time will tell and I hope that this brings about some good positive reforms in the way police are trained, if nothing else. But uh my family's been slowly getting out and uh I understand what you're saying, Kelly, that it's 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 kind of hard to get out. It's comfortable to be in in the house, but we forced our kids to and we went with them. We went to the library in Avon and uh it was a couple, you know, do your hand washing and wear your masks and all that stuff. But it was it was fun getting in the library because um first of all, the all the books were still there and it was fast, it was great. And the librarians, they were, there's five of us in my family, so when they saw us come in, the librarians were getting excited. They're like, the people are here, the people are here. It was kind of fun to be back and doing kind of a normal thing. We went to the Gas House as well here in Edwards, one of our favorite little restaurants. We went in there as a family and actually sat at the table. We were the only ones in the whole restaurant, but uh we had a great dinner there. So we're trying to get out and trying to get back to normal. Most people know I work at C M C and we're facing the same kind of struggles that uh the high schools, all the school district uh schools are doing. What do we do for fall? And we want to be flexible, but we want to get back in the classroom. That's our goal, we want that and we're doing what we can to make that happen. So we're asking our instructors, can we do part hybrid and part in the classroom? And we're trying to be flexible and manage different modes of operation. But uh we haven't made solid plans yet. We're just trying to see how flexible we can be and make sure that we're serving our students in the best way. Saturday morning, my wife uh got me up a little early and said, we need to go to Eagle and look for this boy. So we went to the the apartments there along the river and about a couple hours. We were in a group with Erin Park, one of the teachers of Battle Mountain. She was our group leader and so we uh spent two hours kind of canvassing the area that they were asking us to walk through. And uh yeah, it's a it's a heartbreaking situation, but it's a it isn't, it's encouraging that the community is coming together. So um best hopes and prayers for that family going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Mrs. Stecker?
A lot of my day to day time with my professional role at Mountain Youth, you got a little window into earlier with hearing the community presentations. Michaela and Denise spoke about what we have going on within our organization. You know, a lot of my time's been spent really crunching down on the local Healthy Kids Colorado survey results. Even though that survey was back in November and it feels like the world has, the world has changed drastically since then. I it's still super interesting to see what our kids are reporting um and to start to look at ways we can better support. Um and then being founded as a coalition originally, so much of our work is supporting and coordinating services with all those prevention providers that we heard from today. So it's been really um hopeful and motivating for me to be in conversations with the school district and and hear about prioritizing social emotional learning. Um and and those skills that I feared would um maybe not have as much time to address um coming into the start of next school year. So real excited about that. My kids and I too went to the Vale March and I feel really fortunate. I've gotten to take my young children out to a couple of those um. Couple different marches and protests and and try to figure out ways to have conversations with them about what's going on in the world and and what we value. Those conversations are tough and I really just treasure um opening their eyes a bit. Uh also seeking out different books, haven't been in the library itself, but I've been checking out a lot of books from there lately and doing the curbside pickup. And it is amazing to see the amount of material that's out there on um a lot of these issues, both child, children's literature all the way up. And two, I've um worked really closely with um all of our local law enforcement jurisdictions over the years. And I've been very impressed with um them standing in support of the Black Lives Matter um causes in our community. And very excited to hear Mr. Qualman talk about uh school resource officer conversations and seeking out that feedback from our schools. So we can make um decisions and recommendations moving forward. I guess just overall, I've kind of been doing a lot of internal values reflections lately, whether it's about what's going on in the fall with schools. And there's, you know, the decisions and and what motivates people to think different ways all, you know, it's hard when it's. All great values, but they become kind of pitted against each other. And then lastly, and and I mentioned it before in that community partners um update with Janet. It's been really a a huge game changer for our family to have a couple of the camps reopen. My kids are going a couple of days a week uh between Mountain Rec and Vale Recreation Camps. And I've been so impressed with the safety and hygiene protocols, the small groups they have. Um and just really, really deep, deeply grateful for my kids um having that mental shift and and being able to have a few more people around. Um and then also what it's brought to our sanity and being able to to work and manage better as a family. So really appreciate all the hard work that our partners are doing and trying to offer some opportunities.
Great, thank you very much for all the work that you're doing with uh Mountain Youth. And last but not least, Mrs. Tiber Kounas.
Thank you. Not much to report here. I've been um just taking the kids out, we've been camping, uh going on hikes, just trying to keep them entertained. They're very happy to see friends again and, you know, keeping the distance, but being outside and playing. And um it's been life changing for sure. So a lot of outside time and family time, which is has been great. And um yeah, my heart goes out to Sebastian's family. I've taken it really hard, actually. It's been a hard weekend and I happened to be online on Friday when he went missing. So I got dressed and I went and helped search for like three hours in the middle of the night. And it was overwhelming to see such a large group of people helping and getting together. So um thank you also to um the school district, I mean, their response on Saturday. They were already sending messages and opening the middle school with counselors. It's been amazing, so thank you for that. And yeah, I I'm gonna get emotional, so that's that's it for me.
Thank you very much. That brings us then to old and new business. And um as we do every other session, we'll check in with the Superintendent Goal setting and evaluation. We try to stay on top of that. We'll see what items we put into the work session and then on the regular session, we'll have uh hopefully the approval of the negotiated agreement that will have been worked out the Monday before. Some admin policies and the big approval of the twenty twenty one uh fiscal year budget. And then we'll have some other uh budget and finance related things of unbalanced reduction resolutions, interfund borrowing resolution and uh. Participation in the state free interest, interest free loan program. And then uh working on the terminating a lease, nice business like that to try to uh save us some money and keep us on track. Is there anything that anybody wants to add or something that we need to bring up that is not on the list for all the new business?
Kate, you you alluded to it earlier, but I would actually love to talk about um the uh sort of single use environmental plastic. Piece that was brought up earlier. I I've noticed it all in restaurants too, I understand with, you know, COVID ever be sort of going to no longer reusable things. But I do think that it's an issue and I've been thinking about it a lot as restaurants and places reopen and we all have the single use stuff now that we're maybe avoiding COVID for the next. Till we can have better treatments and vaccines, but I do think the lasting implications are. But I do think the lasting implications are pretty scary. So actually I thought that was a really interesting point. I, I didn't realize that was what was going on and I'm not sure there's a great solution, but I would love to have that maybe as a work session or just a little information on it from the district.
Okay. We can definitely get that on there. Anyone else have anything they want to add in here?
I just wanted to add one comment about the school resource officer, officer issue. I had that on my list as well. And I just want to be certain that we include students in that conversation because I think really what the issue is, is how do students feel when school resource officers are in the building? And while I understand, um, the benefit for administrators and teachers, um, I think we need to have some student voice and make sure that, you know, they don't feel threatened or they feel safe, um, when, uh, those resources are in the op, in the school building. So, um, that was one thing. The other thing is I did receive a message from a respected teacher within our, um, in one of our elementary schools who's been here for a long time. And she asked me to bring up the, um, idea of, she's concerned that if different schools within our district are allowed to make different rules, that, um, there are issues of equity there. Um, and specifically if ECCA is not held to the same guidelines that the rest of our schools are, and I don't know how that is going to play out or what, you know, if they are required to follow what the rest of the public schools do. Um, but I do know that she felt that, that that should be something that was consistent across all of our schools. So I just wanted to bring that up. That's it.
Yes, that is, it is an important issue and we may, uh, as Superintendent Qualman was talking about different, uh, protocol for different levels. Um, but we would definitely need to address that across, uh, the, uh, across the board. Um, I have the notes on those items. We'll make sure that we get them into our next agenda session. And in the future, anyone else on the board have something to add to old noon show?
Yeah, I, it, I don't think it's, um, extremely time sensitive, but coming off of today's presentation from Melissa with Career X and seeing that that program, it sounds like it launched in 2016. Um, it's my understanding that we sort of have our first like cohort of those multi-year students maybe wrapping up their, um, internship soon. And it would be great if it was on our radar to have them come back and present on that experience and, um, uh, help us learn how that was for them.
All right. Excellent. Anybody else?
Yes. Um, I was wondering if at some point we're gonna get an update on the, uh, what's happening with the noon basketball at the middle school. I know the town has been talking about it. I was actually approached by a community member that's part of, um, the team and, um, you know, maybe we could get an update at some point of what's happening there.
Okay. We can definitely get another update on that as it moves along. It's on the list as well. Anything else for the list? Before we move on. Okay. Excellent. So.
I, I, well, no, nevermind.
Sure?
Nope, nope, nope. I think it's been covered.
Okay. We'll have one more time, one more check-in before we, before we check out tonight. But the first item now tonight on the public interest item for discussion is the approval of renaming of the June Creek Elementary School. Superintendent Qualman, I'm, uh, I think you're on the list of this. Yes, sir.
Yes, I am. So, uh, the name, naming rights, uh, fall to the board by policy. Uh, so I think it's policy FF school naming. And, uh, we'll need to rename the facility for a couple of different purposes. Uh, the Colorado Department of Education has specific codes that they assign to different schools. Uh, and that's for funding purposes, but also for accountability purposes. Uh, and the school accountability system, they need to know the names of the schools to associate with those numbers. So with June Creek converting into an early childhood education center this fall, um, we kicked around some names and, and leadership team. And, uh, these were all the ones that, that we considered and you can see the, uh, reasons why we ruled them out and the name that we thought was, uh, simple and, and on point with the location and purpose was the Edwards Early Learning Center. Uh, so that would be the name that we put forward for the board, uh, to vote on. But if one of these other ones strikes your fancy, uh, you, you're more than welcome to e-engage in that discussion amongst yourselves. And this one would be an action item. So we would need, uh, need a motion.
There any, uh, discussions or I can sort of imagine being in the room with the conversation happened as you went down, as I read down the list here, uh, to see where, um, with how that thought process went. Any comments or input from the board? It's, uh,
Yes. Um, my first reaction with this, with many of the items with June Creek as well, it's moving fast. Um, but I think, uh, the list of all those options and the, uh, sort of, sort of brief descriptions and why they, uh, many of them like may not have been best options to move forward with was really helpful. And, um, I, yeah, similarly to Kate, I felt like I could get a sense of what that must be like, um, having gone through that process. And I appreciate the recommendation that's coming to the board.
Right. And we do tend to use, um, lean towards using geographical name places, uh, in our names with where it's, um, located there. But Edwards, by using the name Edwards, it kind of opens it up to that, a whole wider area. I don't know if anyone has any, uh, any other comments or concerns about that name?
I move to approve renaming June Creek Elementary School to Edwards Early Learning Center.
Second.
Are there further comments or questions, discussion from the board?
Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. Tivarcounas?
Aye.
Motion passes six.
Okay. Excellent. Let's see here. Yeah. So that takes us then to the next thing. It is an approval of an intergovernmental agreement to serve as a contractor to provide early head start services. I think we got a Shelley Smith Show coming up here. Very nice to see you. On screen there, Shelley. I'll let you take over.
Um, I do want to start with two things that aren't on there in that call. There's one is just to welcome and thank, um, some people that have joined the meeting tonight to learn more about the Board of Education. And it's our policy council members. Um, we had a short meeting right before this meeting. And one of my favorite meetings of the year, um, is to really, um, have everybody learn about this process and how they can advocate, um, and communicate and be a part of our education system after they leave preschool. So, um, thank you to the members that, um, have joined and, and, um, getting to see this process. Um, the other thing, and again, I normally have a presentation and I, I think two reasons I couldn't do it. One, this topic is very dry and boring. I didn't know how to break it out, but the other is I typically, um, end with pictures of children. Um, I want to thank the district, um, all, but every single teacher has received help and support. At today at two o'clock from two to four, um, all the teachers were together and had two hours of support. And they have all wanted me to thank you for all you've done. Sorry. Okay. Um, back to the dry topic. Get on track. So this is an agreement. Um, we started this agreement last year with early head start to start having us be the contractor for early head start at Eagle Valley. Um, we only had three, um, three allocated spots. And we were committed to only doing the infant room because, um, at that time the toddler room was full. And we had to work through, um, a couple of challenges with meal service and, um, with the size of the classroom. So this would, um, agreement is to continue and expand, um, a little bit. The agreement we have to be a contractor for early head start services at Eagle Valley or, um, the new early learning, Edwards Early Learning Center. Um, it would be going from six, from three to six spots. Again, um, not growing too much, but now that we have increased classrooms, we can, um, increase where fam, early head start families would have access. Um, we already reserved spots for our teen parents and most of the head start spots will be, um, families that are dual enrolled. So they're a teen parent and now they will get the support of early head start, which is those comprehensive services around health, family visits. So it really allows us to expand our teen parent program to be more comprehensive, um, and support the families. Um, and I included the, the pros and the cons. Um, the pros are home visits, group socializations and more support with health and just access to resources. Um, the challenges are, um, we do have to adhere to, um, early head start, um, performance standards. Um, they're not really that different, um, than the performance standards we have to do for head start, which we do in all our preschools. But, um, we do have to do that. Some of the, couple of the things that are challenged are they, they do do all early, early head start as the same age group in, um, in their performance standards. And so they want a class size of eight. Um, so our toddler room, we currently run as class sizes of ten. So it would be reducing how many toddlers we can serve by two. But with the expansion of, um, the early, Edward's Early Learning Center, we're still overall gaining toddler spaces. Um, but I did want to make that, um, very transparent, um, that this growth would now include that. Um, and then we do need, um, a certain amount of contact hours and our school calendar, um, is limited. So we would have to either get a waiver, which, um, early head start program said that would not be a problem to get a waiver for the contact hours. Or we could try to have one infant toddler program open to coordinate or to mirror our preschool plus schedule, um, for some of those weeks during the summer. Um, that doesn't have to be decided today because they can't submit a waiver, but I did want to make that, um, aware or inform everybody of that. And it is an action item, um, to, so if there are any questions, but it is to approve us to continue and to expand our agreement with early head start.
I move to authorize Eagle County Schools to enter into an intergovernmental agreement where Eagle County Schools' Early Childhood Department will be contracted to provide early head start services to qualifying children and families.
Second?
Are there any further questions or comments? Shelley, thank you for being so thorough.
The contact is not my first question.
Ready?
Missy, are you ready? Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. Tivarcounas?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
But how are we looking with, uh, are we forgetting to say our name before the vote? Dr. Long, when we're doing it right. And if, and there's less people, our faces are up more often or you, you want us to still do that, Missy?
I think as long as we have just a few people and you can see all of, I'll, I'll defer to you. If you can see all the faces, then yes. Otherwise, no, we do need you to say your name prior to the vote. Because with so many people on the screen, we can't really identify that that's really who's talking.
Right. The person we probably should ask is the video guy, right? How does ours think about the process? He can just email me. We'll try to know to say our names first, just for the clarification. So that takes us next to the CARES Grant Preschool Plus update. Shelley Smith.
Yeah, I just thought since I was going to be here, um, and presenting that I, there was a couple of items that, um, should give you an update on. Um, our last time I presented, it was to approve the CARES Grant and the Infant Toddler Quality Improvement Grant. Um, everything looks like it's moving forward and we should know by the end of the month about the quality improvement and the COLA and our normal grant. Um, the CARES, um, grant that we submitted for summer programming. I do have to share with you, um, the Office of Head Start had decided to change what they were going to use those funds for because not enough programs have the capacity to offer summer programming. Um, I found that frustrating and it had nothing to do with the time spent. It had to do with just because they had to do the same thing for everybody because, um, and, and in that case, several of our families that could have benefited are not getting it. Um, but, um, they did that across the board. So I just wanted to let you know it had nothing to do with the scope of the work. They just decided not to do any summer funding and put it all into one-time funding based on how many, um, slots you have. So we are anticipated to get $60,375 to use for COVID-related expenses, thermometers, masks, gloves, um, extra mental health support that we did provide, um, as a, um, each week to all families during this time. We normally have a couple of visits, but we did that. So we will, um, once we get final, and we're supposed to have that by the end of the month, verification that we are awarded those dollars, it'll at least help offset some of those costs. Um, any questions on that one before I talk about preschool plus? Um, we are excited and, and, um, also, um, putting health and safety very first and foremost. Um, I do want to share with you, I mean, we weren't sure, um, what the enrollment for preschool plus would be. Uh, we have limited the class size to 10. Um, we have been told by, um, all the governing agencies, we could go to our full class size, which is 15. We're going to wait and do that this fall. Um, if everything else moves forward, we would like to stay with 10 for the summer, get, um, some strategies and some things, um, figured out. So instead of serving 135 children with our preschool plus, we're serving 90. Um, we did end up having 90% enrollment, which is even with the reduction in our overall numbers, we're only serving eight less children than we did last year. So we are not seeing, um, that families are scared to come. Um, we are seeing that they want to be in the programs. Um, we feel a sense of kind of responsibility, um, to, to do everything within our power to have this preschool festival so we can, can show that we can do this. And, um, luckily we are professional hand washers anyway. Um, but we have added a whole bunch of additional safety procedures, like drop-off will be outside. Parents, um, all the different parents will not be coming in and out of classrooms. Um, we do have a whole list that if, if you all do want to see a copy of it, we're more than happy to share, um, everything to when they sign in. If they don't bring their own pen, they're going to take a pen and then they're going to put it in a thing, kitty bleats the next day. So, um, I've been a little bit more involved in the training and the setup, um, than normal just because I feel that we really owe, um, responsibility to our community and, and to the district to do everything in our power to make sure this is the start of, um, showing that we can serve children in a healthy, safe way. Um, so that's, I just wanted to give you that update, um, because I know we kind of are the first time we're going to be serving children, Eagle County Schools, district children in those classrooms. So really want to make sure you're aware and be available to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, Shelley, just out of curiosity, are the teachers going to be wearing masks or how are they protecting?
The, the teachers do have to wear masks.
Okay.
In the licensing. We are hoping they're supposed to be in soon. We actually have clear plastic masks.
The ones you showed us. Okay.
Yeah. I'm really hoping, um, first they were back ordered and we didn't think we were going to get them in time, but I've heard they are on the way. We all, we're going to pilot this summer because I'm worried that they're not going to be very comfortable for teachers because you all know how masks are a little stifling. Well, I'm wondering how plastic is going to be. But again, thinking about three, four, uh, young five-year-olds getting greeted by someone with a mask and can't hear. So we're going to try both, but they do, they, the children do not need to wear masks three to five. And anybody under three can't wear a mask, um, but the teachers are required to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, I would, you, I I would, it would be great if you could send us that information. We're gonna err on the side of over-communication. And so that we can be clear and anybody has any questions for us about preschool, being our first kids back in classes, we might as well have all the information like you said, sharing on this. Erring on the side of over-communicating is great.
I'll send Missy the link to the document.
Perfect. It can just be in our update for next week. That's not an emergency. And I would like to acknowledge, I'm sorry I didn't do it at the very beginning of the meeting, any preschool policy, who members who are still with us. We appreciate all the work that you do. I've served with that committee and it's valuable work that you do and we love seeing the groundbreaking grassroots efforts of the, of the parents and community members who are working on improving the education and the processes for our youngest students. Very exciting that they're gonna be getting back in classrooms. So that was just an information update and thank you for that, giving us posted again on what's going on. And then we'll, we move on to our, everyone's good with, with the early childhood education update before we move on? Okay, thumbs up. We're getting good at this. We have now on the, an action item to approve the resolution supporting the repeal of the Gallagher Amendment, Gallagher Amendment, which will then be forwarded to our representatives. Superintendent Qualman and Ms. Muchler, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. We did address this in work session. So just as a refresher, Gallagher Amendment passed in 1982 with the intent of keeping residential property tax low. It has been very effective in that, actually more effective than I think it was ever intended to be as a result of a couple of things. One, the Tabor Amendment. And two, the growth of residential property values throughout the state of Colorado. So what we're asking you to approve is this resolution to empower our local representative to vote to put this repeal question on the ballot in November. So this is something that voters would have to approve by going through this, this process with the Senate and, and the House approving them in the, in the Colorado legislature. It forgoes the need to go out and do signatures and petitions. So it just puts it directly to the voters. So the, the intent again, if this were to be repealed, is that our residential property taxes, we would likely see an increase in coming years. But I think that's a reflection of the fact that they have been artificially low. They have been suppressed by the Gallagher Amendment and Tabor. And the result is significantly lower revenue to operate our state. Actually inadequate amounts of revenue, especially in the face of this COVID-19 economy. We need to look at every mechanism we can to try to fix our broken state constitution.
Further comments or questions from the board? We had an in-depth discussion of this earlier and we've talked about these things quite a bit over the years, but.
Yeah, I thought the presentation and conversation we had earlier was really helpful and understanding. And with that, I would move to approve resolution number 2019-20-19 in support of repealing the Gallagher Amendment.
I'll second.
And did the reverse microphone? Further comments or questions? We're gonna have a very interesting November coming up here, I think. We'll let you take the vote.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Alrighty, if I'm reading this agenda right, all of our board policies and administrative regulations were on consent as well as the personnel list. And then that brings us to evaluation of the decisions in terms of governance policies. I sure appreciate adding the policies on the end of the presentations just to remind us that all of the work we do is linked to policy. Anybody have any comments on our evaluation feedback or catching me if I missed anything? We had some good conversations advancing the goals and mission of the district. Moving forward, there's gonna be quite a bit of work done over the summer, getting us ready for fall. And impacts on students. Hopefully we're gonna see financial implications in the future. We've got leaps and bounds of progress made to our early childhood education system. And, and then the great presentation from our community partners. Really, the work they do is just remarkable and like they've been said, it takes a village. We've got quite a team here in Eagle County and I appreciate the work by everybody. Any other final comments or closing statements from any board members? Good luck and take care of yourselves over the next two weeks. And we look forward to seeing you soon. Talking budget. Meeting, use the little gavel for the camera, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.